I'm sorry, I can't assist with that request.
But if you provide the audio content, I'd be happy to help you with that.
Okay, I'll do my best.
Thank you.
How's the triathlon?
Where'd that fellow go? Oh, okay, so he's okay. Okay.
We good to go? Okay, thank you. Good morning, everyone, want to welcome you out to our county board of supervisor meeting, September fifteenth, and we will call our meeting to order, and I've asked attorney Bennett to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online today, Hannah? Okay, thank you. Could we get a motion to approve our minutes of our regular meeting held on September fourth?
So move Chairman Mack.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Can we get a motion to approve our demands and handwritten warrants?
So move.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We'll now turn the time over to our county attorney, Scott Bennett.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me come before the board and make this request, very similar to the request I made two weeks ago, we're asking for permission to use RICO funds to make a small purchase for the Safford Police Department. As you gentlemen are very well aware, RICO funds are not taxpayer money, they're funds that have been forfeited by individuals committing criminal acts, typically they're associated with drug or racketeering cases. Ultimately, that money was being used for no good, we, as part of the criminal prosecution, forfeited it, and now we reserve it in a fund specifically for the use of law enforcement. Safford PD has requested that we assist them with some of their needs, and that's what we're asking for permission to use those funds today.
All right, thank you, I think it's a great opportunity to put the money to good use, any other questions or comments?
Absolutely, well needed to ask, and supported a hundred percent.
Yes, I'd make a motion and appreciate the coordination with the other agencies and being the recipient of the RICO funds and then assisting our local agencies with their needs, so I'd make a motion that we approve the use of RICO funds to purchase the, this equipment for the Safford Police Department.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Bennett, and thank you for being here today. Now I'll turn the time over to Eric Engel with our engineering department.
Morning. This is for approval to accept a quitclaim deed on Hollowell, Hollowell Lane from James and Tara Black.
Always accept right away.
Yeah.
Any discussion, Paul, go ahead and make a motion to approve right away for Hollowell Lane from James and Tara Black.
And I'll second Supervisor Howard's motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Eric, appreciate you being here today, and turn the time over to McCoy Hawkins.
Good morning, gentlemen, I'm here to ask for unbudgeted capital money to be spent to purchase a security camera at one of our tower sites that had some issues in the last week. We put a security camera at another tower site that had some theft, and we, I just asked for permission to do this tower site.
Great, I think it's, I think it's much needed, and any questions, concerns from the board?
The fact that this is going in, in a kind of a fringe urban area, will the, the town of Pima have the, I'm assuming because of the, of the view, will that capture anything on the highway or, or anything in the vicinity based on, on the location of the camera? And the reason I'm asking, McCoy, is just, will there be, will this be an asset to the town of Pima in addition to securing our equipment?
Well, first, it's, it's so we can watch our equipment, but it will be tall enough on the camera to watch around the town hall there area, but I doubt the highway.
Okay, very good, well, that's still, that's, it'll, it'll improve security in that area then. Yeah, it makes really good sense that the, the cost of our equipment and the value of that and the cost of replacement certainly would, to me, it justifies purchasing a security camera for, for four thousand dollars, which is pretty reasonable for a standalone outdoor camera.
Got a motion? I'll second it.
No, I'll, I'll, I will make the motion, and I'll, I'll move that we, thank you, John, I make, I'll move that we do expend four thousand dollars, up to four thousand in budgeted capital for a security camera for our Pima telecommunications tower site.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, McCoy, appreciate you being here today, bud. We'll now turn the time over to Manager Walker with the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this first item is a request to ratify an amendment to our inmate work contract, the reason this is a ratification is because it was something we needed to move quick on, and it's something that was actually initiated and very supported by, by you, the board. Ever since COVID nineteen, when we, when we weren't able to receive any inmates out at the fairgrounds, getting inmates back in a full crew has been a struggle, to say the least, we've had anywhere from zero to, to ten, maybe twelve at the very most, but it fluctuates quite a bit. About two years ago, we, we met with our local warden and, and his staff, and I believe it was Vice Chairman David's idea was, what if we pay him more, will they, will they come out, right now, we, or previously, we paid him fifty cents per hour, and we're able to look in Arizona revised statutes and it said we could pay him up to a dollar fifty per hour. And at the time, we were told, no, that they, they want to entertain that because it'd create a disparity amongst agencies, and they wanted all the inmates to be paid the same, so we're, we're basically turned away. Well, about two or three months ago, we received word that ADOT had moved on that, and I, I believe that we're the ones that planted this seed, because we kind of took it to the state level and pointed that out to them, and since then, ADOT moved to paying inmates a dollar fifty and kind of opened the door. So as soon as they told us that was a possibility, we moved as quickly as we could, it took the state about a month or so to be able to get us the amendment, but when we did, I, I met with Chairman Mack, and, and he signed it, and now we're bringing it forth for ratification, so that's a long way of saying thank you to the board for being involved in this, for basically initiating this, we have seen an improvement already, I think we're up to about seven or eight right now, Trey's nodding his head, so I'm gonna say that's right, we would like to get more around ten or twelve, but we're certainly in a better spot in a time where we really need it right now with the fair coming up and AYSO going. So anyway, this is a ratification of our existing inmate work contract number twenty-five zero one three dash thirty to increase the labor from fifty cents to a dollar fifty per hour per inmate, and we recommend that ratification to the board.
Great, thank you, and Supervisor David for getting this started, our inmates are vital to the, to our facilities, for sure.
Well, we, thank you, Chairman, we, I think as a group, we all participated in that, I just was thinking outside the box, and in an era of two dollar candy bars, working four hours for a candy bar, as, I, I, if I were in that situation, I, I think I'd just stay at, at, at the prison, so even so, it's a, you know, ordinarily a three hundred percent inflationary increase in, in the wages, it seems like, how could we possibly support that, but from fifty cents to a dollar fifty is, 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 we can afford that, and, and it, it generates, I think it'll generate some goodwill and, and improve working situations for our fairgrounds, so, but thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a great asset for us, and, and I believe Thatcher also raised, or, or Pima did this as well, raised, and I think Thatcher's on board, Thatcher doesn't use a lot, but Pima does, but Paul, if you can find a two dollar candy bar, you let me know, okay? I certainly, do we make a motion for this ratification? Yeah, I'll make a motion to ratify this amendment to the fifty cent per hour to a dollar fifty for the inmates.
I'll second Supervisor Howard's motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you, this next item is, is also ratification, though we have not signed it on our part yet, but this is an annual agreement, we have a Fort Thomas Schools for a school resource officer, we currently use Officer Lacy out there, she's been doing it, I think, over three or four years, she does a very good job for, for Fort Thomas Schools, and from all accounts, they're very happy with, with her work over there, this has always been an advantageous contract for us, it, it basically gives us a little bit of a satellite office on the far west side of town, it's understood that if there is an emergency, that she's able to respond to it, which she does, and for nine months, she, she works over there at Fort Thomas Schools, and for the other three months in the summer month, she, she comes back and, and just runs a regular deputy's schedule. I'm calling this a ratification because school's already started, and she's been working over there, we've been asking for this agreement from Fort Thomas for a few months, they finally sent it to us, they approved it with their board back in June, but we had a hard time getting it from them, so that's why it's a little late forthcoming, but it has, it's the exact same contract as, as we've had for the last five years, we, we carry the, the officer with full salary and EREs, employment related expenses, and they pay us seventy-five thousand dollars a year for that, for that officer, I still believe this is a really good agreement, and, and very much a win-win for both agencies, and would recommend approval.
I agree as well, I think she does a great job there, and I think a lot of the kids look up to her, and it's a great program, on top of the fact that it helps us keep an officer in that side of town as well. Any questions, concerns?
It's a win-win for us, the advantage of having her down there is, is, is great, so I fully support this. I'll go ahead and make a motion to ratify the intergovernment agreement for Fort Thomas Schools for our resource officer, school officer.
And I'm pleased to, to second Supervisor Howard's motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you. We'll now take this opportunity for the board and the county manager to present a brief summary of current events, we'll start with Manager Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we received some sales tax information for our first three months, so surprisingly, we were a quarter of the way through this year, and as far as revenues come from our local sales tax, we're, we're in a great spot, we're, we're nearly flat with last year, this last month rebounded well, the month before, we were a little down, but for September, sales tax, which is what we call them, they, they came in about four point six percent higher than last year, so for, for the year, we're just under one percent ahead of sales tax last year, so we'll call that, call that flat, which is a, a good place to be. Our state shared sales tax continues to come in really well, it came in almost a hundred thousand dollars higher than last September's, and for the year, we're twelve point four percent ahead of state sell, state shared sales tax over last year. Couple of projects we have out to bid, our Main Street building remodel, which is what we're, we're remodeling that to relocate our county attorneys, that's officially out to bid as of last week, we'll open those bids in our, at our first meeting in October. Our parking lots at the fairgrounds that, that our engineering department has been doing a really good job correlating and working on, I believe they're all done with the curbing, we'll get a good report from Eric here pretty soon, we are scheduled for September twenty-second, so a week from today, to oil those parking lots and roll them for the last time and be, be done with them, other than painting the parking lot spots, so we're, we're excited to see that. We're also in the process of receiving quotes for our, our old fairground sign, the one on Armory Road, still waiting for one of those quotes to come in. waiting for one of those quotes to come in. We received a kind of a surprising phone call last week from our jail bonds team, call them a team because there's quite a bit of people working on this. If you recall, several months ago, we met with them to see when would be the opportune time to actually refinance the jail bonds. Doing so, we could save about $600,000 over the life of the bonds, and about half a million, or yeah, half a million dollars a year from refinancing them if we use the money that we have saved over these first 10 years to put towards that refinance. So we're not quite there yet, but the market has been moving more than I think anyone expected. The interest rates for jail bonds, for these kinds of bonds, has gone down, which is what we're waiting for to basically get a better financing percentage on those to be able to make all these numbers work. So I'll keep the board very in tuned and abreast of how that rolls out, but that could happen this week. We'll just continue to watch the bond market and see where it goes, but that was some very good news.
And the Federal Reserve, yeah.
Yes, absolutely. A lot of things are playing into that. Thank you. On October 6th, we'll have a work session to talk about blight. We've been doing a lot of research on clean and lean ordinances and been working with our county attorney, Scott Bennett, and our contracted attorney, Kent Volkmer. He is going to travel down here on October 6th to meet with us, provide us a presentation, and we'll be meeting with our planning and zoning, our health department, the board, and the county attorney's office to discuss some possible options moving forward on that. We received some information from the state on the bead money, so that's money providing funds throughout the state for fiber connectivity, actually not so much fiber, but just some connectivity. There was a lot of up and down movement with the bead money. Initially, it looked like it was going to be, the goal was to get fiber to all places. And basically, what happened is, once they put those numbers together, they realized that was not a reachable goal. Just way too many remote areas throughout the state. So initially, we thought we might have a lot of fiber going through some of the more remote connections throughout the county. What has actually happened, the plan that's in place is Graham County was granted 1,560 aerial connections, so basically satellite connections, and just eight fiber connections to some of the more rural areas, which isn't, I guess, the best option, but it's still a really good option. So we're not displeased with that, but we did, in connection with CSA, put in some comments with, I think, five, four or five other rural counties that, you know, we would have preferred, you know, fiber through that federal money that's coming down. But adding nearly 1,600 connections is still a really good thing for Graham County. And like we all know, we are, as far as small and rural county goes, very well set up with fiber. A lot of that's because of Valley Telecom and how much investment that they've put into Graham County. We also have Sparklight and CenturyLink and some other options. So as far as small county goes, we're actually in a really good spot, and that'll just make it stronger. So we're happy with that. Just a few things at the fairgrounds. We're extremely busy. This is probably our busiest time of the year, where AYSO and the fair all hit at once. We literally had thousands of people at the soccer fields for our first opening day of soccer games out there on Saturday. It's extremely busy, and just want to give a lot of kudos to Trey and Jim and their staff for having those fields ready. They're actually very green. They look better than they ever have. And of course, they're very busy with the fair setup and all of our buildings, getting them cleaned out and looking good. There's a lot to do to get ready for the fair, so we appreciate everything they're doing. Also want to thank Cindy and HR. We have to hire about 50 seasonal workers every year to make the fair happen, and that's a lot of people, and it's a lot of people when, you know, we have very low employment. There's not a lot of people looking for jobs, but we're, I guess we're fortunate enough to have some people looking for some extra money on that weekend. And also want to thank some of our own staff that we are able to approve if they want to work that weekend as well, and we certainly need their help and use their help. Also want to thank the sheriff's office. They're always willing to have a lot of staff out there, and they reach out to the other agencies, City of Safford, Town of Thatcher, Town of Pima, and they always help us out as well. It's a great show of community support. Just a couple of things. I guess just one more update. We had mentioned in our last work session, we have a little bit of a road issue over at the jail. The back entrance area has been problematic for semi-trucks getting in and out. The initial design on that or construction wasn't great, and some of our semi-trucks going through there actually get high-centered. So kudos to Eric and Johnny. They went in and surveyed that, redesigned it, and have a really good fix for that. So we've designed it, and we have it. They've been soliciting quotes for that. So we'll give a little more of an update on that in the work session. And sorry, that was a little lengthy, but that's my report for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Manager Walker. Vice Chairman David?
Thank you, Chairman. Some of the activities and opportunities to serve included two or three meetings, well, actually, three meetings with the local committee to end homelessness, coordinating with the Arizona Department of Housing, which then is receiving pass-through funds from the federal government regarding both low-cost and subsidized housing and transitional housing. It's still, there are no concrete plans. There's a grant proposal out to convert an old hotel with 12 units to subsidized housing or possible just short-term housing for people who are transitioning from homelessness. The federal government is saying that we're, that they're, the funds are tied to a short-term either substance abuse treatment and/or mental health counseling, and they're not proposing any long-term residential. It's basically short-term. So that is something that will evolve. We'll see if the funds are there and how Graham County is, whether our proposal is competitive and how it's supported other activities. I attended a couple of community intro to stimulants training to try to find out what the latest threats and distribution patterns are, trying to stay ahead of some of the, of the new drugs as they evolve, just for an awareness. And then there's a substance abuse training meeting that I, a substance abuse council meeting that I was able to attend. And then I had a chance to travel out of state and spend a little time with families last week, which I appreciated people filling for me and allowing me to do that. And it sure is pretty back there. Over the last three weeks, they've had almost 12 inches of rain, and it makes us weep. But we're grateful for every drop, which we got some. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard?
Yeah. On the 9th, I attended the Pima Town Council meeting. It's always fun to go down there, listen to the plans of Pima, and listen to their problems, and participate and know what's going on in my district. So I attended that, had a good meeting. On the 11th, I attended a community health need assessment here at the General Service Building put on by the hospital. And it was a good meeting. It was a lot of interesting things that people have that in our community that sees necessary to increase our ability to give better health and needs for the people. And on Saturday, the 13th, I always travel to Klondike to their annual scholarship fundraiser for their little school there, and they have quite a potluck. You eat there, and you're not going to eat the rest of the week, but it's crazy. But it's very interesting to see what people in the community actually attended that schoolhouse over the years. A lot of prominent names over there. One of them comes by Georgia Lester. She attended school over there, and several other of the friends of mine throughout the years attended school in that old schoolhouse. It's not an active schoolhouse anymore, but all the alumni that are living were there. And it was quite entertaining. And then also on Saturday, I had the great honor to attend our county manager's daughter's reception there in Thatcher. And what a well-done reception and a great honor to attend that. And Dustin, congratulations to your daughter, and you guys, it seems that you're going to have a good ride, grandchildren pretty soon. Not real soon, but soon. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to add. I do want to just thank all of our elected officials and department heads for the great meeting that we were able to have, and always appreciate your input and getting to hear what you're doing in your departments, and thank you for the job that you do. We'll now close our regular meeting. We're going to have a public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, you will have three minutes to speak, and there will be a timer right here. I want to turn the time over to Mr. McCoy with our planning and zoning.
Good morning. I'll do my best to keep it under three minutes.
Thank you.
Our first public hearing is for a road name request. The request is Holden Street. It's just off Clough, which is where we've been having a lot of discussion, but they're needing to get that going. So if you guys have any questions, I'll try to answer them, but Holden Street.
Is there anybody here that has, wants to speak on that? No? Any questions from the board?
No, I just comment to Chairman is that our planning and zoning, as well as GIS, and our dispatch for 911 dispatch, all participate in the review of these for duplication and make sure that they're appropriate and also to add them to our system. So appreciate the work that goes in and to getting these requests. Thank you very much, Steve.
You got a motion? Need a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead, and if, with no public input or comment, and it's proposal and recommendation from our planning and zoning, I'll move that we, that we grant the request to name this street Holden Street.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Second one is a street that will go north off of East Swift Trail, east of Palmil. The request is Quartz Ridge Road, and there was somebody here to ask a question about it earlier, but he asked his question and said he had no problem, and we haven't heard anything otherwise from anybody else.
Okay, so nobody here from the public on this one? Any questions from the board?
And I would note, Mr. Chairman, that the requirement, as looking in our packets, requirement is that they actually advertise this, and we saw it in the paper, plenty of notice for people that do read the paper if they have a problem. So it's a thorough process. I'd go ahead and move that we go ahead and grant the request for the naming of this street to Quartz Ridge Road.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. And the third one is east off Central Road, which we've also been discussing. This is a little more, I don't know what the word for it is, but Bomza Way is the request, and it fits with our, doesn't conflict with anything, so it fits. So Bomza Way.
Anybody from the public here to speak on this one? No, seeing none. Does the board?
That's quite a name, Bomza Way.
That's clever way of, it's kind of a hawkish name, but.
And that's just, that's the road that will allow access into these parcels, correct?
Correct. That's the one that'll, that's the one that'll come off Central Road that's so steep right now, it hasn't been built.
And we've engineered, we're engineering it to be in compliance, and the safety issue, it's kind of a blind spot there. Tough, tough way right there, but as long as they're in compliance and it's engineered.
It's being engineered as we speak, and that's why there's no, no building going on. But we wanted to get ahead of this and get the road name in there.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to grant this request to name this roadway Bomza Way.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for being here today. We'll now have our call to the public. All right, seeing none. We're going to open a couple of bids for our fair concession stands.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I wish we had some bids to open, but we did not receive any. So as if Trey needed something else to do, he'll be beating some bushes and see if we can get anyone to serve some food out of those concession stands, so.
Are them bids, are they, they're not just for nonprofits? Are they, they're open to anyone, or is it just nonprofits?
You're correct, Supervisor Howard. It's open to anyone, so.
There wouldn't be time to re-advertise what they're between now and the fair with eliminating the minimum bid requirement of, what, $1,000 and $2,500?
Are those right numbers, Trey? Thousand?
Seven hundred.
1,500? Yeah.
So that, those are kind of high, and with food prices. I'm just wondering, since people look forward to, in addition to the fairway food, to those two concession stands, it'd be nice if we could find a way to fill those, even if we, even if they don't meet the minimum bids.
Vice Chairman, correct, and we can do that. And for what these are, it doesn't really even require that the board open them, so we could put that just announcement on social media and other ways and have them just directly submit them to Trey and Trey and I can just try to figure out something. Right.
Okay.
And because we've officially been them out, too, we can really just take whatever comes first, really, at this point. So we'll, we can talk about that in our work session, reducing the price or otherwise, and try to get that out as soon as possible.
Thanks. And one other question on the bid document for the concession stand on the north. We had a 60 amp service. Have we actually, we went and did some improvements there. Do we have more than a 60 amp service now?
Trey, can you answer that?
We updated all the electrical, I don't know, the ampage, brand new conduit, is everything good there. Part of the problem, panel wasn't connected right, that was part of the problem. Got some new wires in there, got them all ran, got them all connected to a new panel. It was used for the check-in for our livestock people, and they had a bunch of crop boxes that they didn't keep.
I think we have updated that, so we'll try, I thought we put a 200 amp panel in there.
Well, that might be.
I'll make sure we update that.
It would be attractive if people don't have to purchase or rent a noisy generator.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
All right, that'll be all for our meeting. We'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you all for coming and appreciate everybody who prepared stuff for our meeting, and hope everybody has a, has a great week. Thank you. hope everybody has a, has a great week. Thank you.